We'll go ahead and get started. And there we go. And good evening, committee members, board members, MSD staff, and members of the public. Our main goal this evening is to finalize and hopefully recommend our legislative platform to the full board, and to make recommendations about the comar items slated for our December 5th State Board of Education meeting. We have several comar items on a consent agenda, and several for discussion based on their place in the promulgation process and the volume of public comment. In addition to the items listed on our agenda for this evening, there will be an an additional consent agenda item on the December 5th agenda related to a previously published regulation that is currently out for public comment. At our August meeting, we approved changes to comar 13A point zero seven point zero eight, the incentive program for certification. It was a permission to publish. And the superintendent and board leadership have requested that we pull back those regulations based on feedback they have received. And they are considering other ways to ensure that all teachers, including national board certified teachers, are adequately trained and proficient in the science of reading. So you'll see that additional item on the December 5th consent agenda, but it's not something we're taking up really here this evening. We're going to review an amended version of those regulations in forthcoming meetings of this committee when they are ready to go. So if there's no questions, I'd like to move forward with the meeting and move on to our legislative platform. So, Mr. Hands, would you like to perhaps put it up on the screen for us or have any opening comments on that before I ask for questions or comments?
Sure, I'll go ahead and do both first. I just want to say we over the last month and a half solicited feedback from board members on the content of the platform and received some feedback at one of the last committee meetings, went ahead and added that one legislative principle in coordination with members of the committee, which is now a number two on the list, and I'll go ahead and pull that up real quick so everybody can see it. Charlene, it is saying it's disabled my share screen. If you could grant me access. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, you should have it now.
Yes. Just one second. Giving me trouble at the moment, but just to review that particular principle, I'll read aloud it. The state board calls special attention to the urgent need for educational equity and the blueprints focus on closing entrenched opportunity and achievement gaps so that all students, including but not limited to students with disabilities, students learning English and students from historically underserved communities can reach their full potential. And we also presented that in the update to the board on October the 24th. So outside of that tweak to the platform, we shared it once again with board members for feedback a couple of weeks ago and are in position, I think, to make a recommendation to the full board for approval. So I'll turn it back to Chair McCusker to facilitate any conversation on the platform. You're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. I frequently stay unmuted at this time. Are there any board members present here this evening that want to ask questions or want clarification or would like to bring anything to the board about the legislative platform concerning the legislative platform? Mr. Greer?
I do, yeah. So I have a slight late add, and I appreciate Chair McCusker working with me today to talk about this a little bit. So I wanted to propose a quick amended sentence into the student mental health section to read. And I'll post it as well into chat. So we have it, but I wanted it to read. The way student mental health begins is our school buildings should provide safe and healthy learning environments for all students. Following that sentence, I wanted to add our schools should employ restorative practices as an evidence-based strategy to foster the development of a positive school climate. And that's all I wanted to add. Trying to head towards supporting, or we're trying to head towards supporting. Sorry, I lost my Zoom screen. There we go. Supporting healthy climates in schools, addressing things that we're hearing both from parents, students, and teachers alike in terms of students' ability to self-regulate and cease restorative practices at evidence-based way to do that.
Can you, Mr. Hands, can you maybe in another color or something, just so that we can see it typed in?
Sure. And Mr. Greer, if you have the
I do. Let me, yeah. Paste it right in the chat. Yep, here it comes.
My issue is that there are a lot of other practices that I would like to add. And the way it's written right now is rather general. Should we advocate for one evidence-based practice over an array of other evidence-based practices that could be just as effective and beneficial?
So I'm game there. Yeah, for sure. I think if we keep it generic, that's completely fine. We don't have to name restorative practices. If we keep it high level and it's evidence-based, as long as we're, as long as we're heading towards, in my opinion, the idea of supporting school climates to be more, to be healthy, to be supportive of students, to be supportive of teachers. I think that's great. So if there's language to shift to that and make it a little bit more generic and away from one practice alone, I think that's good policy.
So is there anything, if maybe we were looking at that opening sentence? Our school buildings should provide safe and healthy learning environments. Is there something you might add to specified?
Yeah, would it be employing evidence-based practices? To accomplish that? I'm just kind of thinking on the fly now.
May I suggest just a short, a little bit of a rewording there?
Yeah.
And first of all, let me just say, Mr. Greer, I really appreciate the sentiment, and I agree. How about our school buildings should provide safe and healthy learning environments by employing, by employing evidence-based practices to by employing evidence-based practices that support all students? And not married to that, if anybody wants to change it further, I'm just, just a thought.
Thoughts?
I, I fully support this. But I worry that it's too generic, that I think what we're saying is that we want actions taken so that teachers and administrators have the knowledge and tools to, to support children so that schools are a safe environment for all. And I agree with you, Dr. Wilcox, that you, that we shouldn't we shouldn't name one specific evidence-based practice, but I, I don't want this to be a feel-good statement. Rather, I want it to be action-oriented, which is what I think we're driving at.
Does the last sentence put the action in it for you, Joan? Where we talk about working with Maryland Consortium on Coordinated Community Supports and the Maryland Center for School Safety to provide support and best practices to school systems and families? Are you looking for something more specific?
Well, the consortium does have the evidence-based practice group is a group in the consortium has already outlined through a consensus process, evidence-based practices. So they have a list of those and they have guidelines for those. And I'm not sure if restorative practices is part of it, but I think, I think it is.
I, I'm pretty sure it is, based on some of the work that's been done out of Hopkins.
Yes, Mr. Punk.
I think that for the purpose of this document, which is giving us our sort of marching orders for the session. You know, if we have in our mind some of the evidence-based practices that we're most enthusiastic about pursuing, a statement at this level of generality, sort of, you know, it guides us toward things that we know work rather than things that are faddish. And, you know, sort of keeps our eye on that ball of doing things that support kids that the research is borne out. And so I, I don't, I don't have too much of a concern about this being too generic because this, I, this I think captures what we're going for, and we still know some of the things that we're thinking about as we pursue this agenda over the course of the session and use this document to frame our responses to bills that come our way.
And currently I can't see everyone. So if you have something that you would like to add, please do so. Please chime in. Because at the moment I can't see everybody. Anyone else want to chime in? Okay, then can I ask for a motion to add this amendment to what we currently have as our policy statement so that the committee members can take a vote on whether or not we are in support of adding this to the document and recommend as part of what we're going to recommend next week?
Actually.
Okay.
May, may I?
Yeah.
Before, before we take a vote, could I actually suggest one change back just for clarity's sake? I apologize. I think right now it sounds like, this is, this is nerdy, but it sounds like every evidence-based practice that we would advocate for has to support all students, whereas I think you could have a practice that supports certain students in a particularly special way. I think we could, just to be really clear, we want to pursue, we want to provide safe and healthy learning environments for all students by employing evidence-based practices. I think that might be closer to what Mr. Greer had started us with, so I apologize for sending us off path by rearranging it there.
Okay. Anyone that I can't see want to chime in? If not, I would take a motion to add that amendment and then move forward with the platform.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Dr. Wilcox, thank you. Then I will go ahead and ask if there's any more discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, then I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Mr. Hands, I think we may need to be able to see the gallery view here. So we can see the vote. Okay. And the vote again is only for committee members. Dr. Johnson, we don't have a camera up for you, but if you could signify with a voice, that would be helpful. So all those in favor of the amended policy statement regarding student mental health, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, looks to me like it passed unanimously. Okay, then we will add that amended statement. Mr. Hands, do you have that?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right. So are there any other items for discussion in the platform that anyone would like to raise this evening? Okay, seeing none. Then I'm going to ask for a motion for us to recommend adoption of the legislative platform to the full board next week. Mr. Paul moved and seconded by Ms. Abasola. And any discussion on that, on this motion? Is everybody comfortable with what we're putting forth? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. And all those in favor of recommending adoption of this legislative platform as amended this evening to the full board on Tuesday, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Nay? Opposed? Abstained? I forgot to do that last time. All right, I think we again have passed it unanimously. And so on Tuesday's meeting, when we go through the platform, we will take this as a recommendation from this committee to the board as it currently is amended. Mr. Hands, will you make sure that the amended version gets to the board members before Tuesday?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, so then I think we will
If I could, did you want to touch base on that, the other motion to recommend about delegating authority in between the board meeting?
Oh, yes, yes. I apologize. Yes. Yes, I had it, I had it here in my notes. So there is a when we're in the legislative session, we are going to probably need to move quickly on bills in between board meetings. You know, our board meetings are a month apart and bills come through the session much more quickly than that. And so what I would like to ask this committee to consider this evening is a motion to approve the following, that the education policy committee recommends that the state board grant authority to the committee to recommend positions on legislation to the state board president and vice president for approval only in instances where the legislation will be introduced and be considered by the general assembly prior to the next meeting of the full state board. So that if we have something that comes up before a state board meeting and needs our recommendation, this committee can meet a little bit more nimbly. We can make, make a recommendation to the president and vice president of the board, and then they can, we can grant them authority to take those positions to, to the legislature. Does anyone have want to move that motion for me? Or have some discussion, so we can discuss it. Dr. Maile McCarthy and seconded by Ms. Abasola. And open for discussion. Questions? Seeing none? Then I will, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Dr. Getty.
As a non-committee member, I think it's a little slanted for the committee who everyone is a member to take that authority.
Okay.
So the committee members who are in charge and making the decision are making the decision to have the authority. So where does the full board get an opinion?
This will go to the full board.
This will go to the full board. I'm asking for us to take this motion to the full board on Tuesday. I was perhaps not very clear about that.
And I can share what the motion looks like on the screen if that's helpful.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I was, yeah, I was looking for this committee to bring that motion to the board on Tuesday. I apologize for not being clear in that, Dr. Getty.
Yeah, so it's, it's asking this committee to recommend on Tuesday that the board delegate that authority to the president and vice president. You know, if a bill is introduced on February 3rd after the board meets as a full group, and they have a bill hearing on February 20th, if the board needs to weigh in on that, it just delegates the authority to the president and vice president to take a position upon recommendation only in that instance.
So we're just voting this evening on whether or not we will be comfortable bringing this motion to the board on Tuesday. Does that make you more comfortable, Dr. Getty? I apologize for not being very clear in my explanation.
Okay, I'll give it some thought.
Okay, because, okay. All right.
Yeah, yeah, because we can still think about it when it comes to the full board.
Right, this is just giving permission for us to bring it to the board.
I, I just
Go ahead.
I just want to ask, are there any other options? So there may be some instances where some board members feel pretty strongly about a piece of legislation and might want to have the opportunity to voice their opinion. So I know that this is very helpful because once the session gets in play, things can move pretty quickly. So I wonder if there's a way for for people to say, wait, I, I think I'd like an emergency call, or I'd like, you know, some email conversation or something. Because I think there may be some instances where it doesn't sit well with the board. Is that your hesitation, Dr. Getty?
Yes, I think that the history of the board is all-inclusive in decision-making, and a Zoom meeting at the 11th hour of an, of an issue is not unheard of. And if you make it, you can, and if you don't, you don't. But this committee is making the decision to give this committee the authority to make recommendations. And, and
This committee is
May, may I just say something?
That's not what the committee's doing.
As a practical matter, when you're dealing with legislation, sometimes you have a day, sometimes you have an hour. You either are, you either have to be able to respond, or you're going to get ignored. If you ignore, if you get ignored and you don't respond, when they call you, eventually they will stop calling. So I think the thing that I would just say is, and I would say this even if I were not president, is I have enough faith in the board members that they will do their best to make the right decision on these matters. It does not So I think if we're going to play in this space, then we have to be able to move nimbly, and we have to continue to trust each other to try to do the right thing as best we can. So that's, that's where I come out. I think that we will my suggestion is we'll do this and we'll be very judicious in it, but if you're going to play in this space, you have to move at their pace. If you don't move at their pace, they will ignore you. I mean, just that simple.
And what we're doing is not giving ourselves the authority. We're asking this group to bring it to the board to give us the authority. We're not giving ourselves the authority. We are, this board is this committee. This motion is for this committee to approve us to go to the board to give the board to have the board give us permission. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I'm also very sensitive to Dr. Maile McCarthy's concern. That really makes a lot of sense. There might be something that a particular board member who's not on this committee might have special expertise in or special interest in, or just like unique, deep experience or something really valuable to share. And I don't, I don't see this motion or like giving this committee the authority to make recommendations to the president and, and of the whole board. I don't see that as excluding any particular board member's pathway to exercising their influence over some particular issue, either through this committee or by talking directly to Clarence and you know, sort of pursuing that in parallel. So I, I also think that that's a really important thing to preserve, or like, you know, sort of it's, it's important to hold on to that special expertise that certain members of the board have in particular areas. And I don't think this threatens it. And if it did, I would definitely think that we had to do something about it. But I, I see it, I don't see it as a, as impinging upon that at all.
Other questions, comments?
Rachel.
Yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Michael.
Couple, or sorry, Ms. McCusker. Couple notes. Susan, I think you raised good points. Ninety percent of our positions should show up on, I'm going to use that number, should show up on our positions that we take in January and the February and the March meetings. I think this intended to give us flexibility in between as needed. The design feature here is a recommendation that comes out of the committee, the confirmation of board leadership. I know that one of the questions I will be asking on any given issue is, have we talked to the key people that have critical knowledge? Have we sourced all members of the committee? And that's my intention. Clarence and I spend, you know, a little bit more time being in direct communication, and I think that is why the board leadership and committee component of this is embedded in how we're thinking about it, but let's discuss it as a full board. It's important that we're all bought in and we're building trust around the process.
Any other discussion? Okay, then I, I think we'll, we'll vote. This committee is only voting on whether or not we are moving this motion forward to the full board on Tuesday. We're not voting on whether or not we are getting the authority. We're simply voting to move the motion on Tuesday. All those in favor of moving the motion on Tuesday to the full board, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, and we will move this to the full board on December 5th. Okay, and I think that's everything with the legislative platform. And now we're going to move on to the code of the comar items for the December 5th meeting. We have several items that are under, that are going to be listed as a consent agenda, part of a consent agenda. We have the item A 13A point O one point O five, appeals to the state board of education. It is a permission to adopt. All of these are permission to adopt on the consent agenda. We have item B 13A point O one point O seven, nondiscrimination in education. Item D 13A point one five point one three and 14, family childcare, 13A point one six point one seven and eight seventeen and eighteen, sorry, childcare centers, 13A point one seven point one five and one six, childcare letters of compliance, 13A point eighteen point fourteen and fifteen, large family childcare homes, again, permission to adopt. And item E, 13A point fifteen, family childcare, 13A point sixteen, childcare centers, 13A point seventeen, childcare letters of compliance, and 13A point eighteen, large family childcare homes, again, a permission to adopt. Are there any of the items on the consent agenda that anyone feels like they need to discuss? Dr. Maile McCarthy?
So it's several places in the childcare legislation.
Okay, which one?
Well, in, in the, on page three in the introductory, like the executive summary, it said notice of provisions of smoking, vaping, or cannabis used to parents considering placing their child in care. And then the second one that says a resident may not consume alcohol, smoke, or vape in the immediate presence of a child in care. So I have problems with both of those. So the second one is that they, they're not, may not be substance going on in the immediate presence of a child in care. When in parts of the, the legislation a few months ago, we specifically said that it may not be used anywhere in or around the premises. So I find that this is contradictory to what we said. And then the other thing is notice of provisions, like just telling a parent that somebody's going to be smoking on the property is just not, nobody should be smoking. that somebody's gonna be smoking on the property, it's just not, nobody should be smoking or vaping or using substance on the property when there are children in care. So I struggle with those two bullets. And then, when I looked at legislation, I have, I have specific notes on it. I don't, I think we made most of the corrections, but I think there are some places where it's quite frankly, not okay and not consistent. So I mean, I can go through it, or I can submit it to you guys, but. So, so let me see, I'm looking at chapter 11. Oh, five. And it says, if a resident of a family childcare home smokes or vapes any substance, including but not limited to tobacco or cannabis, the provider shall make this known in advance to parents who are considering placing their children in the provider's care. I thought we already said you can't do that when children are in the, in the premises for childcare. This is not consistent with what we agreed to. And then with. Let's see, oh, four. B1. A provider or any other individual who has childcare responsibilities may not smoke in the immediate presence of a child in care. Well, that is not consistent with what we said about that might not, should not happen anywhere on the president, on the residents. Yeah. When there's children there in care. So that concerns me. Then F of that same section says, a provider and any other individual shall ensure that all alcohol, tobacco, cannabis, cannabis edibles and smoking and vaping paraphernalia and byproducts are kept out of reach of the children in care. That's, that's pretty vague. You know, I don't, I don't, I find that vague. So I, I, I think, and I have notes all over this. I'm still concerned, and I would, I am not ready for this to be adopted. And my notes are pretty consistent. It runs throughout. So I struggle with that. We have, there are children in care. And I don't care if it's legal. Providers, children should not be subjected to anyone using any kind of substance while they're in somebody's care in a daycare facility.
Okay. Anyone else in for discussion?
I just, I have a point, a question of clarification. So for chapter 11, just as an example, chapter 11. Oh, five. A. If a resident of the family childcare home smokes or vapes any substance, including but not limited to blah, blah, blah. The provider shall make this known in advance to parents. So. I, this, this is just a question I'm trying to understand. It's. I understood that to be. If they consume those products at all, even off the premises. Outside of ours, that's when the, you know, even in those cases, the notification needs to happen. Is that, am I reading that right?
I, I think that clarifies it, Mr. Paul. The way, the, a quick read is that as long as you tell somebody, you're good. So I think perhaps some more clarification.
Okay, yeah, I, so the way I, I'll say the way I was reading it was, if you consume these at all. Even outside, then you need, then you need, or even outside of the hours, outside of the premises, then you have to do this notification. And then B, like the addition B after the deletion B. Specifies that you, oh no, I guess that's alcohol only.
Yeah, I'm taking issue to immediate presence. When in other parts, we say that you cannot do it anywhere in that building or in that childcare facility while kids are there. So I see what you're saying, and I think clarification would be very helpful. Using the word, something like the words that you said, but then the next one is, what is immediate presence? It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't jive with the other language that we put in there, which very specifically said it may not be consumed anywhere inside or outside while the childcare facility is in operation.
Chair McCusker, Dr. Cook has her hand raised.
I, I'm sorry, Dr. Cook. I was looking at the statute. I apologize.
Elliot also has his hand raised. I don't, I can clarify some things first. Notification, we have to remember that some of these are people's actual personal residencies. And their homes. And they might be consuming any of these products when children are not in care and they're in their own personal home. And in that case, we're asking that they notify parents because parents should know when they make that decision. That that is, that certain products are consumed in that home. And so that's the reason for the notification. That's also best practice in terms of guidance from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families in these specific cases.
I don't disagree with you. I think that's great, but I do think there should be some clarification. The way you expressed it. I, I just feel like people are not gonna read that deeply, and I just think it needs a few more words to clarify. I completely agree with you. I'm not in disagreement. But I just think a few more words to clarify would be helpful.
Mr. Mr. Shone?
Well, I was just going to just try to give a little bit of background. If you recall, and someone correct me if I'm wrong. These are already regulations that were put in place on an emergency basis. Okay, I see Akila nodding her head, yes. So these are already regulations that are out there that the board approved to publish on an emergency basis. And an emergency regulation is only good for 180 days. And while that 180 days was in process, the board gave approval for these regulations to go out for public comment. No public comment was received. They were vetted through the the stakeholder groups, and now they've come back without any suggestion. So these are already regulations that are out there, and if there's going to be, if the board decides to make any substantive changes. The emergency regulation could go away until the, the whole process starts over again with the proposed regulation and then coming back to the board. So I just wanted to just clarify that. Have I said anything that's incorrect, guys?
I appreciate that, and I understand that, but I struggle with loopholes that are inherent in the language.
Elliot, is there a way?
Dr. Cook, please. Thank you.
Elliot, is there a way to issue another emergency regs? Because what we don't want is to have a complete gap of no regulations around cannabis. It's gonna significantly harm our licensing efforts. And so is there a way to make amendments and do another emergency reg and get this through the promulgation process again if there are substantive, substantive changes?
You can always try, right? It'd have to go through AELR. But if, if I'm hearing correctly, Dr. Mila McCarthy is talking about there may need to be some interpretation about what some of this language means so that there aren't gaps, and there could be technical assistance coming from the department on clarification of what some of the terms mean, if there is ambiguity, or if there is some type of way that someone could game it if they really tried.
Dr. Michael?
Thank you. I might offer a couple things here, Dr. Mila McCarthy. The big one, right, is, is the regulation around cannabis. I think there are critical changes that we need to, to look at as well that you've raised. I might offer us a path, you know, the other pieces happening, ALR is getting ready to go on. Reduced capacity with session coming. So on my mind, potential course of action is to approve what were the emergency regs as actual regs. With the intention and ask the staff to bring us another round of regs that are fine tuning around some of these language and, and the important, but potentially less consequential as how significant the regulations around cannabis are. So that we get the cannabis pieces on and then do another cleanup round that we would look, you know, with session, hopefully that we could see, you know, adopted mid to late 2024. Because if we do nothing, then we potentially have no, if we pull it back, we potentially have no regs around cannabis. And we still can't regulate changes you're suggesting until mid 2024 anyway.
I'm okay with that as long as we do it. I feel very strongly about this. Very, very strongly. You very, you don't often hear me come out as strongly and persistent as this. So, you know, if that's our intent and it actually happens, I'm okay with it. But if we say it and don't do it, I won't be okay with it.
Let's keep it, I'll just respond, Chair McCusker, let's, let's keep this on our agenda of, on our tickler list of things that that we need to immediately revisit and get back in the hopper are these revisions, are these minor revision sets. I might suggest we do that.
Okay. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, and, you know, in the meantime. If there's some enforcement action that's brought and, you know, Elliot's out there shutting someone down. Or litigating someone who has been shut down or sanctioned in some way. The transcript of this meeting is pretty good legislative history for these regs. I don't know. I mean, Joan, I, or Dr. Mila McCarthy, I think, I think there's a lot of agreement here. So I, I really like Dr. Michael's solution of getting some, making sure there's no stopgap and really keeping this at the top of the list. And Dr. Mila McCarthy, I'm with you on that 100%.
Okay. I'll go with it.
All right, any other points of discussion? Okay, then I will. I'm gonna pull up my notes. I will ask for a motion for us to recommend adoption of the consent agenda Comar items. At Tuesday's board meeting. So moved by Dr. McCarthy?
No, not moved, okay. Not yet, not yet.
Do we want to add in like a?
I would like to let the board know that we're doing this under these circumstances, but.
Okay, so then what would your recommendation sound like? So I have the right language?
It, it's hard to do if it's just part of a consent agenda. Cuz the whole purpose of a consent agenda is to just adopt the bulk of the items within that consent agenda.
Think you'd have to agree with Dr. Mila McCarthy. I think we'd have to deal with this one separately. And you can have your preamble as to what we intend to do, but I don't think you can. It's consent agenda, it's we just vote as it appears.
Okay, so then. Would the motion you would prefer to make would be for us to uncouple the family childcare regulations from the consent agenda?
Yes.
And have them be part of the regulatory actions for discussion?
Yes.
You want to move that?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
That was Dr. Johnson, I think?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion. Okay, all in favor of decoupling the family childcare regulations from the consent agenda and adding them to the regulatory actions for discussion on Tuesday, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Abstention? Motion passes, we will recommend that those two are uncoupled. And then added to the regulatory actions for discussion for Tuesday's meeting. At which time you can we can make sure we talk about what our next steps have to be in order for these regs to move forward.
Thank you.
And, yes, Mr. Shone?
Can, can I just clarify that you're only talking about the cannabis regulations? You're not talking about the emergency intermediary sanctions with also childcare?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Chair McCusker, Dr. Mike has his hand.
Oh, I, I keep missing the little yellow thing. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr.
No, it's okay.
I, I think we need a motion to advance that regulation now with the recommendation that we prove it, but also that we re, we bring it back into cycle for further review. So I'd make that motion.
Okay, so moved. Do we have a second? Dr. Wilcox? Okay, can you state that motion one more time just to make sure we have it?
I just wanna make sure, which item is it, item?
It's the, it's the cannabis, which is 13, let me make sure I have it right. Which is 13A 15 oh one. Here it is. Okay, 13A 15, 13A 16, 13A. Do I have this? Yeah, these are the.
Yes, you do.
Yes, 13A 16, 13A 17. Childcare, family childcare, childcare centers, childcare letters of compliance, large family childcare homes to prevent inappropriate exposure or ingestion of cannabis. Do I have that correct, Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Okay, so it's that one.
Motion is that we, on item D of our agenda, which is those, those regs, that we recommend that the board approve it, under the condition that we adopt, recommend adoption under the condition that we bring it back into review, staff bring it back into review and back to this committee with the concerns outlined by board member Mila McCarthy.
Thank you. Okay, and that is, was seconded by Dr. Wilcox. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. Those in favor of Dr. Michael's motion. Raise your hands, please. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, passes. Mr. Hands, do you have all that?
Unanimous, yep.
Will you get it all to me, please? This is all finished. Okay.
Elliot, this is Charlene. I have a quick question. Should I officially move that regulatory action under the, with the other regulatory actions that are up for further discussion on the agenda?
Well, that's what I understood the vote to be.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Nesteri. Okay. All right. So now that moves us into our regulatory, regulatory actions for discussion. And we're gonna start with the kindergarten readiness assessment, which is a permission to publish. And Mr. Hands, I believe you have a few comments on this one before we get started.
Yes, so I shared with the committee some revised language this evening on this permission to publish regulation. The KRA Comar was brought before the board in October and after discussion regarding the request for permission to publish. It was removed and then brought to this committee for further discussion. And is being brought back at the December 5th meeting after some revisions. The statute requires MSD to adopt regulations to implement the following changes, to require the administration of the state-approved kindergarten readiness assessment. And to use that as a census and not a sample of. Um, and to use that as a census and not a sample of students. And to administer the KRA to all incoming kindergarteners by October tenth of the academic year. Um, some of the revisions on the latest version you have, um, further align the draft regulations with uh, the education article as concerns were mentioned at the October meeting. Um, and provide clarifying language in regards to the appropriate use of the KRA uh, in pre-K. Um, or for pre-K students. Um, so I'll turn it back over to uh, Ms. McCusker to facilitate any discussion on those changes.
Okay. Uh, do we have any discussion on the KRA reg? That anyone would like to bring forward? Doctor Mailey McCarthy?
So, so Mister Hands, I didn't get a chance to look, but I did look at what we were originally sent and there was a place where it said the districts may use components such as, and, and is that changed to a shall now? Of the components of, the way I, I just pulled it up, so.
So, um which, in which section, Joan, or Dr. Miller McCarthy?
Yeah, Joan, please, it's fine. Let's see, um, and that one I left on my desk at work. I have everything else with me. Um, it says, I think it's in red. And I think the prior one said, um, it now says each each school year, each local school system shall complete the administration of the department-approved kindergarten readiness assessment to the representative sample in the following areas. Social, language, academic, physical. I think in the previous one, it said may contain the components and, and I said it should contain contain the components. So I think this may have cleaned that up. I'm just checking.
It, it still says may include.
Where, where, where am I missing them? Cause I'm trying to look at it quickly. It says may administer a portion.
A one C?
C, that's it, right. If, if you don't include all of that, then what are you getting? I, I, I don't understand why there's a may.
That's exactly the language in the statute. It would be difficult for us to take it, make it a shall when the statutory language says may. Um, if the board feels you know, that might be something for the legislature to look at, if the experts are saying it should include all of those, all four of those areas, but right now, the statute and the regulation, um, say the exact same thing.
Okay. Um, I think it warrants looking at, but, but okay, um, and then, and then in section, um O two dash three B, it says that the, the school system shall complete the administration no later than October tenth. And then later on, and I just think I need clarification here in, um definitions, um, C. It says a teacher who is administering a full census assessment shall complete the assessment honor before October first of the school year. So, so I don't understand why there's a disparity of dates.
That's um, the, the second part you read, um, Dr. Miller McCarthy is coming out of the regulation. So that's being removed. In brackets, in red.
Alright, so, so now everything is one day at October tenth.
October tenth, yeah, and that's a statutory change.
Okay. Right, other questions or clarifications? Doctor Getty, and I know you had some interest in this particular regulation?
You're muted.
Yeah, you're muted.
Um, I still don't have a satisfactory answer for why the window of opportunity is so large and why we can't narrow it down. Can Shayna talk about that?
Doctor Cook? I'm, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind, Rachel, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in.
Okay, yes, that's not Doctor Cook's thing, right?
Um, yeah, it's uh, Ms. Haslett, um. The language that they have uh, in the regulation, Doctor Getty, as it stands, reflects the statutory language. Um, so it's a direct citation from the law, um, referencing uh, a portion of the assessment, um, may be administered during the summer months before kindergarten begins as a direct statutory citation.
Any other questions?
Uh, I told Zach I would shake my head um, in affirmative when, um, regarding that, and he's exactly right. That's exactly what the statute says, and if there's a concern about having some of it administered in the summer months, then that might be addressed. But there's another piece of the statute, Doctor Getty, that might be helpful, um, and it's D of the statute, and it talks about before administering the early learning assessment, the county board shall consult with kindergarten teachers. Uh, in determining how to implement the assessment. So there is, there is um, leeway at the local level. For them, for the, for the county boards, um, to look at when it's specifically administered, is my view.
Thank you, Mister Shown. Any other questions, comments, clarifications? Okay, um, seeing none. I will ask for a motion for us to recommend to the board that we um, give permission to publish this regulation. Moved by Dr. Mailey McCarthy. Any seconds? Seconded by Dr. Wilcox. Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will put it to a vote. All those in favor of recommending permission to publish to the board on December fifth, please raise your hand and, of, of the uh, item F thirteen A point oh eight, point oh one, point oh two, three, kindergarten readiness assessment. Uh, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes. We will send this for recommendation. And take a look at uh, item G thirteen A point zero seven, point zero six, programs for professionally licensed personnel. This is a permission to adopt. And uh, we have staff, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Mailey McCarthy? You're, but you're muted.
Here's another big struggle. You getting to know all my isms tonight? So, um I love that you laugh at my jokes, Chuck. Um, there is a section, let me get the page, where um it talks about nationally certified teachers passing the, the national certification recognition exam. And the criteria that is included in that test is to be able to um, use instructional methods of reading that are wholly disproven and not along the science of reading. We talked about this for at, at least uh, um, three quarters of a year, and it is still in there. And I can't support legislation that requires nationally certified teachers to adhere to a practice of reading instruction that is not based on the science of reading.
Hey, we have staff this evening to talk to us about this reg. So, um, I think we will go ahead and call up Kelly Meadows. Uh, cause she does have presentation and I, your comments are not uh, on deaf ears. They certainly were found in some of the other comments, but I'm gonna let Ms. Meadows talk about this regulation. Are we gonna just unpack this one, or we, do you want to unpack this one and item H at the same time, Ms. Meadows?
I would do them one at a time.
Okay.
So, Doctor uh, Miller McCarthy, do you mind pointing me to the section that you're referring to?
Yeah, so, um, hold on, let me get to the page. It goes through all the types of licensure and then I, okay, it's on page eight. And it says National Board Certification. And it says, um, National Board Certificate Issued From The National Board For Professional Teaching Standards To Which A Comparable Maryland License Exists. And part of that, that license process involves proficiency in teaching the three cuing method for reading which we know does not follow the science of reading. And I've raised this issue before, and, and I understand that the National Board has their National Board, but I don't know why we are endorsing a practice that we now are, are understanding that does not follow the science of reading, and in fact we're asking for districts to implement science of reading instruction and training to teachers. And here we're saying you know, one of the highest levels of certification is, is the National Board and, and it's supporting uh, an instructional method that flies in the face of science.
So I think we're talking about thirteen A twelve. Did, do we want to start, we want to kind of change gears and start with
Alright, yeah.
Set of regulations?
That's fine, I'm, you know.
All right. Thank you. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna move to item H then, thirteen A twelve. Okay, just want to make sure everybody's on the same place if they're pulling up the regulation or anything like that.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So the National Board, uh, the National Board Certificate route, just to make everyone clear, um, is a current route. Um, and it is something that was carried over from the current regulations. Um, it is an initial pathway. Um, I would like to point out, um, that to renew we have embedded requirements in a different portion of these regulations, which actually follows its oh four renewal. And you will see that regardless of the pathway that brings you in, including National Board, you do have to demonstrate mastery in being able to teach reading using evidence-based reading instructional practices. And I think, I remember the National Board actually, um, or the Reading League sent a letter, I believe, to this board. And one of the misunderstandings of this regulation was they thought that the National Board Certified Pathway, those individuals were exempt from that renewal requirement, and that is not the case. The way that the renewal requirement is written, it applies to anyone who is assigned in a position, early childhood, elementary, special education, all grade bands, ESOL that is required to provide reading instruction. And so what that renewal regulation says is you can demonstrate that proficiency by taking the approved assessment that this board has chosen, uh, which has been a requirement for quite some time. Um, you can get an attestation by a department-recognized observer, um, and you can participate in department-approved training that we identify for this purpose. So it gives some options for that individual to renew that license, but they do have to demonstrate that competency upon renewal. So we, we haven't required that for this particular pathway to get in the door, but we are requiring it to continue to hold that license after the five-year mark.
So I appreciate the effort. But still, these professionals are going through this process and becoming proficient in a strategy that we don't support as a state. And so I wonder if you can include in that, I mean, I, I just, I you know, I don't know. What I'm gonna say is ridiculous, so I'm not gonna say it. I just don't think it's appropriate for us to put forth a National Board Certification that includes certification in a reading instructional methodology that flies in the face of science. And I've said this many times. And I don't know how we should handle it. Um, if it, if it's just that I am the lone voice and, and protesting pretty strongly, then I am the lone voice, but I just don't think it's correct.
Um, if I, if I may, I don't think you're the lone voice, Joan, because I agree with you. However, I think this is part of the blueprint. I think it is in statute.
Problem, that's a problem.
Right, so.
Problem.
Right, but.
So why do we go along with a huge problem? How do we fix it?
Well, we fix it.
It's a huge problem.
It, I don't disagree with you. But we are under law right now to write the regulations as they, if my understanding is correct, and tell me if I'm wrong, please, um.
No, I, I understand, I, I
Yeah, yeah, I, I, the way to fix it is through legislative action.
Yeah, well, I, I, I can't support this because of that. So I'm just saying, I, I understand what you're saying. I understand, but I cannot support it.
Doctor Michael has
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to get better at that, I really do.
Yeah, uh, Doctor Miller McCarthy, I um, definitely respect the position. I um feel ju, I feel maybe not just as strong, because I don't want to match that. You, you've been working in this space a lot longer than me. Um, probably, so we'll
Thanks for that, Doctor Michael.
But I will say that, um I am have similar concerns. The concrete actions, um, that we're taking, and, and so I want to make very clear about the concrete action we're taking. The notion that cuing is listed as a strategy as a part of literacy piece is, does is inconsistent with a claim from National Board that their curriculum agnostic. There's
I'm sorry, say that again?
That they're, that they're curriculum agnostic. Which is the public discussion of National Board cert. So the materials talk specifically about cuing strategies. I'm, I'm looking at it right now in my, on my other screen. Um, the concrete actions we are taking, and we will take I would expect here, one is that every teacher, regardless of National Board, you know, West, Ms. Meadows is addressed. We're gonna go through training, um, so there may be some confusion and we may need to be really clear. Um, and the regs are explicit, but a part of the work that we're doing around the expert review and the entire policy framework around science of reading is this is, um, this is the direction of how we're teaching children to read in Maryland. The second thing is, um, this is a topic of conversation, um, as we, um, you know, I look to President Crawford, this is something we continue to discuss with, um uh, with the Accountability and Implementation Board, um, which, you know, when we think about ways of adjusting the blueprint, in one of those critical ways, they have some authority to do that, um, through their um, through their board, and they also make, or the, you know, are the primary source of initially making recommendations for amendments to the blueprint. So they also have a relationship, um, you know, and have had contact for many years in developing the blueprint around National Board cert. So all of that to say, it is a concern that, that we will take to that conversation as well. Um, that I just want to assure you, so those are two very concrete actions, the regs and this. That's not to convince you to vote yes, I just want to be clear for the public of, you know, what the concrete action we will take. Um, given where, uh, the concerns lie here.
I appreciate that. But it doesn't solve the problem right now with this regulation, but I do appreciate that.
I can also share that we have, we have asked the National Board to update their materials as soon as possible.
I, I know that. I do know that, and I do appreciate it, but you understand that I have to put, put my, my saber in the ground here. Um, cause unless we start putting sabers in the ground, we're not gonna move forward with the science.
All right, um. Ms. Meadows, did you have anything like prepared that you wanted to present to the board, or were you just expecting to kind of field questions this evening? I didn't want to, if you had something prepared, I wanted to make sure you had time to, you know, present. Uh, if not, if you were just here to field questions, then we can
I, I, I can field questions. I can give a brief history for the new members, if, if you're interested, um, that may be helpful. Um, I don't have a presentation, but I certainly can take a moment to discuss kind of how we got here, because I know there's a lot of new members on the larger board, but also several of them are here tonight. So if that would be helpful.
It would be, it would be very helpful.
Right, great. So this work actually started in twenty sixteen um, with the Teacher Induction, Retention and Advancement Work Group. And that was legislation that uh, predated the, the Kerwin Commission. And it charged the state, a very large constituency made up of the State Department of Education, the Higher Education Commission, uh, the unions, the LEAs, uh, our educator preparation programs, many, many players came to the table. Um, and, and we had a, a year's worth of work um, that led to a final report called the TIRA Report, and it's still on our website if you'd like to see it. And that's kind of what um, you know, springboarded this initiative. And you know, the, the State Board of Educ And you know, the, the State Board of Education, the Professional Standards Board took a look at that report and said, MSDE, we, we need, we need major renovations. We need to repeal and replace educator preparation as well as certification in Maryland. And at the same time, now the commission, the Kerwin Commission is getting started and, and so we're following that at the same time. And lots of things kind of, you know, came together in this moment. And, and so it's taken a very long time to get here because along the way, we had the commission, we had the interim report, we had the blueprint. And so we kept kind of pausing, going back to the table, making adjustments to make sure that we were in alignment with the new law. And so in twenty twenty-two, early twenty twenty-two, um, this board and the Professional Standards Board, which is your sister board in regulations having to do with ed prep and certification, that both boards have to agree together um, to adopt. Um, you did grant permission to publish these regulations the first time. This is the second round, and we got a lot of public comments during that round. And we took a good six months with the Professional Standards Board where every month we met and we reviewed every single comment, and we made a significant amount of substantive changes. Significant. Um, and the version that this board agreed to publish is along with the Professional Standards Board, now in January twenty twenty-three reflects all of those substantive changes that we made mostly from the public comment that we received. So this is the second round. I want to make sure that I'm clear on that. Um, and, and certainly these regs look a lot different today than they did in twenty eighteen when we first, you know, started bringing them to the board to look at. Um, but at this point in time, the Professional Standards Board, they have granted permission to adopt these regulations without making any substantive changes. Um, we talked, uh, at length during their September, October and November meetings. Um, they took a look at all the public comment. Um, I, if, if you'd like, I can give you kind of some themes of what we saw in the public comment for each set of regulations. Um, and then that board made the decision that there was nothing in those public comments that warranted stopping this process. Um, they agreed that the time to do this was now, but they also recognize that there are pieces that we should come back to. Um, once we start that second phase of promulgation, that's another thing I should mention. It has always been the plan to do this in phases because this is a massive amount of regulation. So what you see here today focuses on teachers as well as renewal requirements for all types of educators. Um, major changes to the disciplinary action process in Maryland. Uh, lots of lessons learned. We really had to tighten up that chapter. Um, and then the general provisions, but it has always been our plan to come back in phase two and tackle our administrators and supervisors, all of our specialist positions. And then certainly we can take the opportunity during that phase to clarify language that, you know, we have received public comment and the Professional Standards Board recognized, it would be nice to clarify this. Is it necessary right now? No, we can, we can handle this in guidance, but when we open the regs, we should, we should handle this. Um, so there's always that opportunity to kind of fine tune in phase two. With this amount of language, um, we're not, I don't think we're ever going to get it perfect. I think we need to get it as good as we can get it and then recognize that we're just going to have to continuously um, make updates as needed. We, we don't want to be in a situation where it's another twenty years and we're trying to repeal. Um, and in, you know, seven chapters of regulation, that's, that's not how we should be doing this in the future. So this is a brief summary, um, of kind of how we got here.
Thank you. Um, I, I have a question. Um, from a, a practical standpoint, and, and, and I know that I've discussed this with you, um, in a previous meeting, but at, when, when, when this takes effect, teachers who are currently in the licensure process, like we're already licensed renewals, we're doing our renewals. What guidance are we going to give to teachers who are crossing over onto a new licensure? For example, let's say I am right now in my advanced professional and I'm doing another um, couple of years or whatever. And I think that I've already gotten the credits I needed to renew. And now we have all the, the new, you know, everything with the points that you, that you add up. And how am I as a teacher who is already thinks that she's finished and is ready to go for whatever the next licensure would be? How am I going to know whether or not I am still in fact in shape to do that? Or teachers like, we may have teachers right now who think that they're, you know, maybe they're coming up for renewal this coming summer and they think they have what they need. And then how are they going to find out in time to fix it if they don't? You know, or what kind of guidance are we going to give to make this, um, easy for teachers to understand and not leave them in a panic and a lurch in the coming spring semester? Where suddenly maybe they're going, oh my God, I need, eh, I thought I had everything and I don't, and I don't. How are we going to alleviate that problem?
And that's the number one question I'm sure that, that is going to be asked and has been asked throughout this process is what about, what about me? What happens, you know, to my particular circumstances? So we are recommending, and we have a policy drafted and ready to go. Uh, we are recommending that we give every professional educator a full validity period. Meaning that if you, um, I'm going to use, I'm going to use Rachel Yu and I'm going to use my, those two different examples. So I think, you know, I am due to renew in twenty twenty-six, right? So I have, it's a five-year validity period for all professional certificates. Let's say you are due to renew in July of this coming year, right? So giving a full validity period means that you in July can either decide to present the renewal requirements that were in the old regulations that you've already done. Or if it's easier for you or more advantageous for you, you can do what's in the new regs. In July, you make that decision, you're renewed. You change from an advanced professional certificate to an advanced professional license. And for your next renewal, you have to bring to the table what's in the new regs. For me, I still get that same full validity period. So I have until twenty twenty-six to decide, do I want to use the six credits that are required now? Or do I want to do the ninety professional development points that are in the new regulations, whatever is most advantageous for me? Maybe it's a combination for me because I've already done three credits, which is in the new regs. I can do six credits in the new regs. But I, but now I want to pick up and do PDPs. And I want to do, you know, I want to present at a conference, which was not an option previously. So I have that, that option. But in twenty twenty-six, once I make that decision and I renew, now I need to follow the renewal requirements. So we're giving educators a full validity period because there are some people that get everything done within the first year. You know, so we don't want to penalize them, even though they still have four years left. We want to accept what we told them they needed to do when they got that certificate.
Okay. So, okay, I, wow, awesome. I like that. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That's, I think that's going to make a lot of sense to teachers who are currently in the process and that's going to alleviate an awful lot of stress.
We'll have to publicize, we'll have to do. Publicizing that on our website. We plan on, um, sending out like a mass bulk communication through our teach system. We're going to work with our certification partners, our LEAs, our non-pubs to make sure that they understand that policy.
Think, okay, awesome. Thank you. That's a really eloquent solution. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, um, anyone else with questions concerning?
Could you, um, Ms. Meadows, could you explain a full validity period?
Five years.
Five years.
Yeah, all our professional certificates are issued for a five-year validity period.
Okay.
So anyone that was issued a certificate prior to the adoption of the regulations will have the option during that validity period to do either.
Okay.
So you can stay in your current set of regulations through your next certificate if you want to.
If you've already done the work, we don't want you to have to turn around and do different work.
So you, so you, you would be okay for, if I'm, if I'm, um, approved this year in the old regs, and I have another five years before I have to show my new certification, um, materials, correct?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so you have your full five years to, to use your old ones if you want to.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Michael, Dr. Michael, oh.
So, you know, I just want to reiterate, I mean, I'm new to the board, but not new to these regs because they've been dominating the space around teacher prep for five to eight years, somewhere in that range. I just can't underscore how important it is right now that we bring some closure to these regs because the limbo in this time period has put so much on pause in our teacher regulation, teacher preparation community. So is going to be imperfect. Um, you know, I think our role as a board is to ensure that we don't lose sight of these regulations and the implementation um, that we're, um, this is something that we're asking questions about. There are lots of changes in here. Um, one of the changes that we're most responsible for, that, that, that is unique to our version of the regulations, it's not required, is the creation of the in-district pathway for conditionally certified teachers. Is a replacement for those who've been around, um, for a long been called credit count, um, which has been a very unsuccessful strategy in, in certifying conditionally certified teachers. Very exciting portion of the reg, could not be more excited. Um, Dr. Johnson knows quite well in her work at Copping, um, that, uh, that we have dramatically expanded number of conditionally certified teachers in the state, um, that have tripled almost in the past five years. Um, approaching, it's not exceeding four thousand statewide. So this pathway is critical. We have received feedback though, and I am concerned around our definition of who can, uh, around this notion of coursework and who can provide it. And so, look, my concern, and, and I've asked, um, Ms. Meadows, that, that, that you and, and the superintendent be ready to speak to us at the board meeting, specifically on plans as on implementation about how we're thinking about who can provide coursework. I have significant concerns about anyone other than higher education partners providing coursework in the in-district pathway. Um, we do not define who can provide it in these regs. I don't want to hold up these regs. I really want to focus on guidance and implementation, and if we need to revisit in regs in the future, we do that. Um, but I, I want to be very thoughtful and very careful that will, in our creative solutions at the district level around, um, working on these in-district pathways. One, that we're continuing to partner with higher education and that we're not getting too creative, that we're, um, lowering standards unnecessarily and appropriately across the state. If you might, there might be some things you could add to, into, to that portion of the in-district pathway as well.
I apologize, Dr. Michael. Are you ask, are you asking me?
I mean, I don't know this very well. You, you know this much better, but th, this portion, I mean, the way this is designed, maybe you could add just a little bit more color for us as a group about how we're thinking about building this notion of ensuring that our teachers are demonstrating competency and receiving appropriately training in that in-district pathways. Teachers are learning on the job in that induction period.
Right. So the in-district pathway, um, any district that would like to participate in the training program will have to go through an approval process uh, with the MSDE. So we will be looking really hard, not only at that education piece and ensuring that the education partner, the partner that the district is, is going to do business with, um, is offering, um, rigorous coursework that is aligned to those in-task standards. But we're also going to be looking really closely at that induction program that the LEA is offering because I'm going to be honest with you, a lot of traditional induction programs, they're not going to cut it. Um, you know, we're talking about, and, and this is already happening. We have, you know, four thousand conditional teachers across the state. And, you know, this is an opportunity for us to really hone in and ensure that the support and the professional development that they're getting when they enter the classroom during that through induction is what it needs to be, because I'm not sure that it is right now. Maybe in some LEAs, I don't know. Uh, but this is an opportunity for MSDE to really examine that and ensure that those supports are in place for that teacher who is brand new and hasn't had any preparation except for content. Um, and rather than just putting them in the classroom and saying, okay, go take these classes in any order that you want, at any institution that you want. Um, you know, let's have a more cohesive training program that requires that induction piece. It requires that extensive mentorship, which is a huge part of this. And it requires that coursework, um, that is aligned to the in-task standards. And, and all parties, you know, the institution of higher education, the LEA, um, they have to agree that this individual is ready for licensure in the end. And if they aren't successful in their induction program and they aren't successful in passing those classes, then they should not be attesting to that readiness and they should not be getting licensed. And I think that this is a much, um, more rigorous and solid way to support those career changers who in the past, we've just been saying, here's a list of coursework. Go find the courses, come back to us when it's done. Um, and, and we'll give you a certificate. And as you mentioned, um, and as you can imagine, that's very difficult. And, and a, a lot of teachers aren't successful with that method. So, um, I think that this in-district training program is such an opportunity for this state, it's such an opportunity for our LEAs and our educator preparation programs and our community colleges to collaborate in ways that they never have before, especially in that induction piece. Because the blueprint says that our educator preparation program should be involved there. And I don't know how many LEAs are really taking advantage of their EPP partners when it comes to induction, but this could, this can force that. Because if you're going to have a partner to, to offer that coursework, then you're going to incorporate that partner in the entire training program. That's, that's the key. And we're going to be here to monitor that. And we do have to flesh out all of the processes of how that looks. I'm looking forward to that. Um, but I really do think that this is going to be, um, a better approach than the transcript analysis approach.
Dr. John, Dr. Johnson, your hand is up?
It is. I, so I'm sitting here and I'm thinking about, um, teachers who come through third-party programs like BCTR, TFA, urban teachers. How are we ensuring that those p, individuals who participate in an induction program maybe for three weeks in the summer? And then, then the fourth week they're in a classroom, how are we making sure that those programs are also adhering to the standards?
So that's a great question, and I'm glad that you brought up the alternative programs because I do want to be clear that that is a distinct and different pathway than the in-district training program. So the alternative programs have a set of requirements in the regulations that we haven't yet gotten to. So when we get to thirteen A, oh, um, oh, six, oh, seven, that is, that is where we're going to talk about um, those requirements for those alternative programs, and they are rigorous as well. Um, it's just a different process of approval. I don't know if we can want to kind of jump back and forth with both of these sets of regs, or if we want to take them one at a time, I'm, I'm happy to do either.
No, uh, let's take them one at a time.
Uh, Dr. Michael, your hand is still up?
Yeah, I just want to note, um, that this is a critical opportunity with the in-district pathway, right? And Dr. Johnson, remember these are for, these are folks that don't even have anything over the summer for the most part. They start fresh teaching, uh, first day of school, uh, not in the residency, the conditionally certified. This is a critical opportunity. It's becoming a major part of our new hire fold every year. Um, I want to ensure that we are being very intentional about partnering with not only community colleges, but also our HBCUs. Um, as we conceptualize this new approach to coursework and that we're being very intentional with building back partnerships, um, and course completers, um, you know, at our HBCUs, particularly considering, um, Um, that our conditional pipeline is significantly more diverse, uh, than racially diverse than our traditional residency pipelines. Um, so just want to flag this, the intentionality here is going to be critical, um, as we think about key partners, uh, in these pathways.
Ms. Meadows, when you said that this is kind of the first phase. That this is going to, we're going to be rolling this out for some time. Um, what do you expect to, to see coming next?
So in the next phase, when we focus on, not only focus on, you know, the small changes, uh, that we feel like we need to make. Um, for example, uh, you know, uh, we have, already know we have to change one of the definitions in the, uh, program approval regulations. Because Educator Shortage changed that definition, so things like that, we, you know, we're going to have to do right away. Um, the, the more long haul things are the specialists and the administrators. And I, and, and the Professional Standards Board has prioritized, they've gone through every single specialist, they've gone through every single administrator area. They've looked at, when was the last time we've updated these? Um, and they've kind of ranked them in, in the priority they think we should, we should hit them. Um, that will include for each of those areas, you know, bringing together a work group. Um, of, of experts in that particular area from across the state. Um, and, and that group of, of experts will make a recommendation for that particular regulation. So we will bring those regulations one at a time. We in no way, shape or form will try to bring you entire chapters, it's not usually what we do. And we certainly don't want to do it when we don't have to. So, so for instance, you may see that the Administrator 12. Um, certificate area is one of the first administrator areas that we'll hit. And we'll bring to both boards, um, for, for permission to publish and we'll go systematically through. And so we'll, we'll be bringing those a little at a time.
All right, thank you. All right, so clearly this has been a long time coming, very important work and work that's going to be continuing, uh, for, for quite some time. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion, I'll entertain a motion at this time concerning, uh. Either just G or G and H, um, in these regs for the meeting coming? Nobody's.
I've moved that we, uh, we recommend approval, uh, uh, for, uh, for G and for H. Um, and, uh, noting again that these are, um. Uh, while we are discussing them, these are permissions to adopt, so recommendation, permission to adopt for item G and H to the full board, uh, next week.
Anyone second? Mr. Paul? Okay, any discussion? Okay, then I will put the, uh, the vote to the committee. For us to recommend adoption for items G and H with the, uh. Understanding that we know we're going to be coming back to some of the details on it at a later time. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes and we will bring these up with a recommendation for approval of permission to adopt to the full board. Okay. Well, we had a lot to do tonight, uh, we got a lot accomplished, um, and I look forward to working with the committee. During the upcoming legislative session, we're certainly going to have a lot before us. Um, if members of the kid, uh, just a couple of things before we go, if members of the committee learn of possible bills that you'd like our committee to be aware of. Please forward information to me, board leadership and Mr. Hands, so we can make sure it's on our way radar. Uh, Dr. Wilcox is already following the evolution of a bill from last session regarding, uh, Medicaid payments for services that are conducted in schools. Uh, didn't pass last, last session, but the concept is very much alive in the Maryland Department of Health. So with her help, we are keeping an eye on things, and so that's one thing we're tracking. Um, our next committee meeting is scheduled for December 14th. Uh, right now it's scheduled for 8:00 PM, um. We may take a look at maybe making that 7:30 or so, we'll see, we'll take a look. For, for right now, we're scheduled for December 14th at 8:00 PM. And, uh, by this time, we should start seeing some of the prefile bills coming through, so we may have some legislative things to discuss at that time. Um, so lastly, I want to thank the members of the full board that took the time to join us this evening and, and help us, uh. With, uh, some of the COMAR issues and, uh, to talk about things that they needed to get clear in COMAR. Um, I certainly want to thank our committee members and staff for staying so late tonight and helping us with, with what I think is really important work. And thank you to the members of the public that have, bear with us this evening as we are, are getting a late end on things. So I appreciate your time and attention, I hope everyone has a great evening and board members, I will see you bright and early Tuesday morning. Thank you, everybody, for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rachel, good night.
Good night, everyone.